Yeah, I'm working.
Thank you. We're gonna bring this back to order. We want to thank Counselor McKim not only for everything he's done, but the quickest jump through the agenda I think I've ever seen in my tenure on his council. It was very nice. And we're reflecting on why we didn't put you in this center seat more often over these years. All right, let's go to item 14 on the agenda. This is a request from the commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation and fund 4900-0000 Employee Morale and the amount of $3,500 in the services category.
All right, I saw a hand raised from Angie Purdy, the county commissioners.
Hi, thank you for letting me join.
You don't have your sound yet. Angie, give us one second here. All right, start doing the alphabet and we'll test your sound as we get closer.
Do you want me to do the alphabet?
Guys, have everything unmuted upstairs?
I thought we could hear a little bit.
I heard something.
It says I'm unmuted.
Now we got you, Angie. All right.
Okay. So you were just ready for me to talk now?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, you can go right ahead.
Thank you, sorry. So yeah, this is just a request in our employee morale fund. And this is a fund that is based on donations, but primarily based upon revenues that we received from the use of the vending machines. And we will use this money, this is the money that is used to provide, the last few years has been cookies to county employees in years past. It used to be sufficient enough for dinners, but at this time, the revenue is significantly lower.
Angie, can you say that last couple sentences one more time, a little bit louder and slower? Because I think we're struggling to follow exactly what you said at the end.
Okay, sure. This is the funds, the fund that in the past, we have used for the cookies that are handed out at the end of the year to county employees. In years past, it used to involve a dinner. However, the revenues such that we can't afford to do that now.
And these are funds from our vending machines in the courthouse and Justice Building and other places?
Correct.
Okay. We'll go to counsel questions or comments. Looking to my right, looking to my left. Done. We'll go to questions from the public, or comments from the public. If you haven't come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
I want to note for the record that Counselor Hawke did leave the meeting during the break. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous.
All right, we go to B.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1,000-0068 County General Commissioners and the amount of $5,000 in the services category.
All right, Ms. Purdy.
All right, I think I've been to you guys a couple of times on this particular line. This is our other insurance line. And given the, some issues that we've had, we've had ongoing bills that have come in. And so this $5,000 should take care of us for the end of this year.
Go to questions or comments from the council. I'll look to my left.
Hello?
I'll look to my-
No, don't. Right back.
All right, we'll go to comments from the public. Look to the, if you have comments, come to the podium in the Natu Hill, or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous.
All right, we'll go to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriations and fund 1,000-0161 County General County Buildings and the amount of $70,244.25 in the services category.
Second.
All right, Ms. Purdy.
All right, thank you so much. This one, this one has, was a bit of a, was a bit of a conundrum. Because what we had been, what we would be invoiced was not what I had on my sheet. I had a conversation with the contractor and he's like, I've looked at this over the past few years. This is how we've been paid. And long story short, what has, what had happened is that we had been paying some of his, the expenses for our ASI contractor that does all of the cleaning in all the buildings except for the Justice Building, Health Building, and showers, and provides the security at the Justice Building, and does the maintenance for what I would call the justice buildings. So because we had payments coming out of a different account line, when I was using our prior budgets to do the additional, like a 3% increase, because per contract, they get the same increase as the county employees, I wasn't capturing all of the actual budget. And so this is our attempt to get this back in line. And sadly, I'm afraid I'm going to have to come back next year also, because I am consistent in using not all the right numbers.
We'll go to questions, comments from council. I'm gonna look over here to my left. Think they're still thinking it through.
Sure. Okay, I do, I think I have a question.
Yeah, Counsel Wiltz.
Just, so I'm understanding the request. You, you have a lot of money in this account, but this account isn't what you were using to pay these bills.
Okay, so no, there are multiple accounts that pay this contractor. And when I would look at the multiple accounts that are assigned directly to this contractor, when I would apply any kind of additional percentage increases, I was not capturing all of the expenses, because we had been paying them for some other, when, when lines were running short, they would pay them from a different account line. And so those were not being caught when I did my budget for this particular contractor.
Have, you have, so I'm, okay, you have a cash balance of $2 million plus.
Sorry, that's the entire general fund.
Twenty million.
Forty million.
Yeah. Twenty million. And that's the entire, I don't have access to all that.
Yeah, that's just, that's the whole general fund.
That's the whole general fund.
I'm like, okay.
I don't have enough funds to transfer.
Wrong thing anyway. But so you just need $70,000 put into these different funds, and you anticipate that you will probably need that same-ish amount next year to kind of get right with what, what you, what we owe this particular contractor to do these services?
I will come for an additional for next year. I cannot, I don't remember if it's the same amount. I don't, I don't want to speak to next year right now, other than letting you know that what I had requested to be budgeted is incorrect. Because I was consistent in not, I didn't realize to, to go to a professional services line to find expenses associated with this contract.
Just to clarify, is it, the amount that you asked for in the budget, it's too, too low?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
For these, for these, for these account lines. So it's all one, it's all County General. And so there's multiple account lines. So what I'm requesting for now is to get us through the end of 2024, and then I'll come back in 2025, later in the year, to correct the 2025 budget.
All right. Other questions or comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If we've got them, please come forward in the Natu Hill to the podium, or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKam?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous.
Thank you, guys. And Jeff, I wish you all the best. You have been fabulous, as everybody has said. And you've been fun, because sometimes I know that I've texted you, or you've texted me during a meeting. And I still remember the one time, I think it was during COVID, and it was one of your meetings, and I think you sent me a text that said something to the effect of, "Nice eye roll." And it's been like, I need to watch what I'm doing.
It took us a while during COVID and video meetings to get used to our poker, maintaining our poker faces, didn't it?
We did.
Angie, you've been a pleasure to work with.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wish you all the best.
All right. I'm gonna actually, for item 15, I'm gonna pass this over to our pro temp Jennifer Crossley to, to take the gavel. I can offer the motion, and to get you started, counsel, I move to approve resolution 2024-47 approving a donation to the Bloomington Economic Development Commission.
Corporation.
Corporation. Sorry, I did that.
All right, thank you. We got a motion in a second. Now we will have Ms. Molly Turner King go ahead and present.
So this is a resolution, it's resolution 2024-47. It's approving a donation in the amount of $30,000 to the BEDC. And kind of talk about a little bit more of what the BEDC does, and how this money would help them. Ms. Jen Pearl is here.
See Ms. Pearl coming to the lectern. So, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I'm Jen Pearl. I'm president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County. And our focus is really on innovative economic development practices to attract and grow high-quality jobs for the community. We regularly work with members of council, the Monroe County Airport, county staff like Jeff Cockrell, Jackie Jellin, on economic development initiatives in lieu of the county not having an economic development department themselves. Commissioner Githens and Councilmember Crossley are members of our executive committee. And county-focused work really comprises a good portion of our time. We have a lot of great properties out in the community, on the county side, as well as major employment zones. We take investments and contributions to our work really seriously. So here are just a couple of highlights from our work this year. This year, the BEDC relaunched our website, BloomingtonEDC.com, to promote opportunities in the community for employers to grow, alongside a multi-year strategic plan that's focused on growing our traded sector companies and attracting new ones through 2026. We convened community stakeholders and created resources to respond to Catalent's layoffs in the spring. So we're here for both good times and for bad times. We convened meetings featuring everything from our gubernatorial and local candidates to new stormwater ordinances, which was really well-attended, and included the county's MS4. We hosted workforce tours at companies including Cook Medical, Boston Scientific, and Phoenix. We convened over 80 members and partners for feedback on the CDO. And we supported Simtra on its $225 million investment and expansion earlier this year. And we had a really great groundbreaking featuring members of the county in June. So we really appreciate the ongoing opportunity to partner. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
For that presentation, now I'll look to my colleagues to see if we have any questions or comments. To my left.
So I, I have a Danish last name, and there's some Danish news in this community. Can you tell us what's going on?
So you may be referring to the public news of Novo Nordisk's impending acquisition of Catalent.
Do we know, like, the, the local, can you talk about, do you know the local impact and what you're kind of looking at, and how you're thinking about this?
We very much welcome the news, and we work with all companies to support their growth in the community.
Thank you.
But very much looking forward to that.
I just want to also clarify for, for anyone watching at home, or anyone in here even, this, where this says donation, this reflects an effort by the county, this council, a year ago in our budget, to expend dollars towards the BEDC, which I mislabeled earlier, but I never mislabeled what they do, to support their, their mission. We do not have an economic development department. We probably years ago should have thought about those things, but we didn't, and we deferred to others on that. Now, we have folks, good folks in the auditor's office, that monitor the, the effects of that. But as far as folks going out, talking to people about, this plant could go here, Elsville's got that, shake hands with this person, IU could offer you this, meet these synergies, we don't have that. And the reason that this is particularly important to me, I've said this before, but I'll say it again, is as one of the, the many townies that still remain in these parts, I can remember generationally our economic development history, and looking at times when unemployment was high, and unemployment became low. When we talk about Catalent and it being acquired, I think back to that very site there, when RCA was acquired, first by GE, later by Thompson, and then that plant did go away. We have to have people at the, from the county, from the city, et cetera. We have to have people always looking for the connections to these organizations, the organizations that need to come in, get our talent, some of the kids, I shouldn't say kids, some of the students I teach, others. We have to have those things to be a promoter and a glue for that, so that we can support our tax base. I will also say this, the BEDC is one of the first organizations I can recall to talk actively about the population realities of this community, in that our, we are not necessarily replacing our workforce at a rate that gives me a healthy sleep at night. And if we don't do that, that means that it's harder when you go to talk to people about coming in here to work, because the numbers for the labor statistics are just not going to be there. The BEDC was talking about that before it was cool. And as the BEDC started talking about that, then everybody started talking about it. And I was in a meeting the other day, and someone goes, "Well, our population pyramids." Look, we have to be real about this stuff. People are, people's lives, livelihoods are affected by it. We can no longer, as a community, look down lovingly down Kirkwood at Big Red and say, "It'll always be that way, and we'll always be okay." Because every time this community has tried to do that, either showers brothers, RCA, life sciences, right now it's good, but you never know, right? And so we've got to always be looking out for the next thing. There were people in our seats in the day, or in other public seats, that did not think showers brothers would go away. And now it's City Hall, among other things. And so we've got to do these things for our workforce, our children, et cetera. And I don't mean to be dramatic about it, but having been in a family that saw the flip side of that when jobs do go away, there's nothing you can do at that point, other than Hail Mary, and let's see what happens. And so I appreciate Jen being here, staying through a long agenda, thinking through these things, because when it does happen, not happen, we have to be professional about that. So, and I think that's why we budgeted money for that. So thanks for letting me indulge that a little bit.
Well, and also shout out to the Indiana University IBRC that had that data out there. So this is public, I guess, public service announcement. Check out the data. We really need to work on this for our community. So thank you.
Ms. McKim?
Thanks. Yeah, I can't come anywhere near the, the great comments that President Deckard just made. But just a couple of quick ones. I do, you know, I do think, given the change in administration, there could definitely be concerns in the life sciences sector, you know, depending on what happens with vaccines, for example. And I think this is where we have to have somebody who's, you know, whose eyes on the, on the case. And so I think it's really important that we have an organization that is, you know, dedicated to, you know, not, not only looking to the future, but also working with our current employers, in case there are changes in the landscape that negatively affect employment here. And then just one other quick comment, just to kind of follow up on what Mr. Deckard said. This, just, and just to kind of clarify to the public, this is spending money that is already in the budget for this purpose. So this is not an additional appropriation, or throwing out money at the last minute, or anything like this. This is something that was passed in last year's budget, or was passed by the council last year for this year's budget. And this is just executing on, on what the council had already appropriated.
Yeah, Counsel Wiltz?
To pick up on what Counselor McKim was saying, this is long overdue. And it's embarrassing that it took this long to get here, and that it's taken a lot of grit from my colleagues, and I appreciate that, getting it to happen. And hopefully, this will be something that we can perpetuate into the future, because that was the intent when we originally put down on paper that we wanted to support economic development in our community. So thank you. I'm happy to, to support this.
Counsel Iverson?
I, I want to talk a little bit about why I'm supporting this tonight. And part of it is due to one of the plant tours that BEDC organized at Phoenix Enclosures, where we were able to see just how much technology has been put into what is, used to be an elevator factory. And, and just how much that has helped this community, how many jobs it's creating, and the growth that they're anticipating. That alone, having my eyes opened at that plant tour, is enough for me to support something like this. And certainly, I'm looking forward to those types of jobs coming to this community. So, thank you for being here.
Thanks for joining in the tour.
Yeah, it was a good one.
Thank you. I have a question and a comment, but I'll start with my, or a question. And I'm looking over to the table where Ms. Turner King and Ms. Woodruff is. So my understanding is, this, oops, this resolution, should council pass it, the, then this goes to the commissioners to be paid as of tomorrow?
It will be in the claims document.
Got it. Okay, awesome. And the comment that I will make, and I won't be before you long, because all of my council colleagues up here basically said all the things that I'd feel. And I just want to thank you, Ms. Pearl, for your diligence. And we obviously have shown why the BEDC is such a vital and necessary component of Monroe County government, and it's true collaboration. And you and I had chatted, because when we had our executive meeting, I was a little embarrassed to, you know, when we were talking about budgets and whatnot, and projections for 2025, to see that, you know, the promise that the county made was not yet fulfilled. But now, you know, we are going forth with what we need to do, and we are doing that right now. So I definitely appreciate your due diligence and all the things that you have endured over this past year, to keep smiling, and to keep coming to us, and to keep talking to us. That's really true collaboration efforts. And then, since he's the gift that keeps giving in county government, I appreciate, this is the part where I appreciate Counselor McKim, because last year, when he was a part of the BEDC, when he wasn't able to step in and, you know, be in the meetings, I was able to step in and learn a lot of what the BEDC does. So I appreciate Counselor McKim giving me the opportunity to do that, because now we've pushed enough to hopefully pass this resolution and go forth. So I appreciate you being here. Thank you. Now we will go ahead and move to public comment. If we have anybody that wants to comment on this item, please come forward to the Natu Hill room, to the lectern, or raise your hand on teams. I see one hand on teams by the name of Joe. If you can unmute, you will go ahead and have a few minutes to speak. Joe, are you able to unmute? Or TSD, can we help him out?
You should have mic permissions, Mr. Joe.
Joe, I'm not sure if you heard, but you have mic permission, so you should be able to go ahead and unmute and make your comment for three minutes. Try to wait a few to see what will happen. Any other takers on Zoom right now? Nope. I'm gonna give this person an opportunity to speak, but I know we need to move on. So, oh, maybe?
Maybe while we wait, Madam President, I had a comment I received. The chamber could not be here for public comment, but wanted to echo their support for this, and apologize that they, they couldn't be here to offer the support that they have in their partnership with the BEDC.
Yes, are they still not able to?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hey, fantastic. All right.
You got three points.
Hello, my name is-
My name, hello, my name is, my name is Joe Davis, and I represent the TOP, or the Taxpayer Objection Petitioners. And though we do like the idea of monies going toward the BEDC, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, we believe that there should also be a BS CD, Bloomington and Monroe County Social Development Corporation. And we have equal social needs in our community, in our county, that are as great as the economic development needs. And not all economic development is positive for the average person, the average taxpayer. We can just look at the $126.5 million in tax breaks that were given out last year to for-profit entities, leaving the rest of us taxpayers to pick up the tab for our crumbling roads and sidewalks and streets and parks and so on. And we need to have the other side of the corn, coin, the flip side of social development. It is equal and as necessary. Thank you very much for listening to these thoughts. And next year, 2025, would be an appropriate time to create a new Bloomington and Monroe County Social Development Corporation, so we can address the social needs in our community and let everyone know that we are not just about reckless development, we are about social development with a vision for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, may I, may I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
And I actually wanted to thank Mr. Davis for his comments, because we agree. And I think there's oftentimes, as people are learning about economic development, they may think, oh, this is growth for the sake of growth, or unfettered capitalism, or something like that. And if you talk to any of our counterparts around the state or around the nation that work on this, it is specifically focused on smart, responsible growth for our community. It is focused on not just any jobs, but jobs that raise wages for the community, as well as employers that reinvest in the community, such as the old Otis Elevator Plant in Phoenix, what you mentioned earlier, on tax rate, or tax abatements, incentives that are provided. It was actually on that tour of Phoenix that they said, hey, it was the local incentives that the county improved that enabled us to make the case to our corporate offices that we should make these investments here, which then increases assessed value and increases tax revenue coming into the community. And if folks are ever interested in doing any, like, economic impact analyses or things like that, to understand the impact on the community in terms of direct, indirect jobs and other tax, you know, taxes that come into the community based on these investments, we are always very happy to talk about that. The other thing is, you're seeing this locally and across the state, but we work with partners to support quality of life as well as other needs in the community. Our Economic Vitality Project, that many of you were involved in these past couple of years, highlighted our progress and our needs on everything ranging from poverty alleviation to childcare, to healthcare and mental health care needs, diversity in the community, education and training. And so, yes, we agree that these are critical components of any economic vitality in a community. And we're just grateful for any opportunity we have to talk about that, and thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. All right, see, and no more comments. Will Michelle, will you please call roll?
Before we call roll, I did amend the resolution to reference the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and not Commission.
So, do we need to make any, nope. Any?
Ask unanimous consent to accept the amendments?
That's it. Can I have unanimous consent from the council? Okay, see, no objections. So ordered. All right. Now, can we have roll?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Pearl.
Thank you for the support. And also a huge shout out to Councilmember McKim. We were so grateful to have worked with you all these years. And honestly, you were the first person I would call whenever I had tax questions and could just explain it in ways that no one else can. So, please add all of our names to the Jeff McKim Fan Club over here, so.
It's been such a pleasure working with you and your whole team at the BDC.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Back to you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, we're at Item B on the agenda under Legal Department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2024-45, an interlocal agreement with Monroe County, the City of Bloomington, and the Town of Elletsville regarding animal control.
Second. All right, Ms. Turner King, you want to speak to this?
This is our interlocal that we have passed for quite some time, probably over a decade. It provides animal control to County, City, and the Town of Elletsville. It is slightly increased, and that has somewhat to do with the distribution of animals amongst those places.
One have more animals than the other than?
I think it has to do with the amount of services animal management offers in those areas.
All right, we'll go to questions, comments. Counselor Wiltz?
Well, I think this is where Counselor Hawke usually mentions that it's hard to tell the dogs from Elletville.
How do you tell a city dog versus a county dog?
I felt obligated to fill that.
City mouse, the country mouse, Elletville mouse, they're all there. Other, we needed that right there. Are there any other council comments or questions on this? And this is routine, right? This is more of the same?
It's the same one that's passed annually, just with the cost increase.
Counselor McKim.
First, same as the first. If anybody catches that reference. No, they're just, just actually to echo, Counselor Deckard just made, sorry, made a comment that this is a routine. At one point, this was not routine. It's been routine, it's, it's been routine now for maybe 10 years, but this was remarkably controversial in the early days. And there were fights among counselors, between council and commission, between the city and the county. This, this has definitely been a very successful process ever since it was, ever since this agreement came into place. But before the, and I think, I think it was Jeff Cockrell that really worked hard to bring it about, but it really was, this was, you'd be shocked at how controversial funding for animal control.
That gives me hope for the future on, on the real tough ones.
We, we had one, one coun, former counselor that made a comment, something, when we were discussing this, he said, you know, out in the country, we just have a way of taking care of these animal control problems. So we've come a long way.
All right, councilors, any other comments for the good of this item? Seeing none. We'll go, we'll go to the public if they have any lingering concerns or comments. They can do them now, but this podium, raise their hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, and we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, we're going to move on to Item 16. This is an ARPA item, and I may be looking to the auditor's table quite a bit here on this one. We've got some moving parts.
Counsel, I move to approve additional appropriations from the American Rescue Plan Act Bon 8950-0000, and the amount of $172,618.91 in the Services category.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. I believe some papers are being distributed by Carly from the Auditor's Office. Carly, what do we need to know here?
We received amended numbers today, and those numbers are reflected in the document that is being distributed right now. The appropriation amount should be amended to $206,190.01 for the appropriation amount.
Counsel, I ask unanimous consent to adopt that amendment, as Carly just read. Any objections? So ordered. All right. So we've got, so this is the new amount, and this keeps us right by things.
This is the sum of the unutilized funding from other projects, in addition to the amount that was never appropriated in this fund. I believe there was consent at a previous meeting that any additional funding would be used for the septic program.
Okay. Councilors, do you have any comments or questions? Counselor Iverson.
And just so those at home can see what we're seeing, we're, we're seeing a, a list of lost revenue and restricted funds and the appropriate expended, unexpended, obligated. And I think most of that is in the packet, correct?
This was sent out at 3:00 PM today after we received amended numbers from the Commissioner's Office. So I apologize for not having this digitally available.
That's, that's all right. I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that.
And, and we, Carly, just to clarify, that we, what I believed for all along, we, by the end of this year, must, this all must be obligated, or we lose it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We've largely got that done.
Yes.
And we're just cleaning up a little bit here, right?
We have, we have some contracts that are going before the Commissioners tomorrow. On the sheet in front of you, there are two gray boxes. The first box is council actions that are supposed to be occurring tonight, as long as you guys agree. And then the second box is Commissioner actions that should be occurring tomorrow, so long as those are approved.
Any comments or questions from council at this point? Let's give them a second, just to look. One thing I'll offer while, while folks are looking at that, I just want to offer a general comment. Where you see on this box, total received and appropriated $28,830,982, those are, just for anyone watching at home, that's not something that we found in a piggy bank. That is federal dollars for ARPA post-COVID that have come to this community from our federal partners. The reason I bring that up is earlier you heard my tirade about $2 trillion coming off a budget and me being suspicious that's going to be some grants. I want everybody to look at that ARPA number for the last time, because that's the last time I think you'll see that, at least in the term I just was elected for the next four years and probably beyond in my lifetime, because that train is leaving. And we've spent that well and wisely and had a lot of help with that. But that's it for that show, so to speak.
It just occurred to me, I believe this was distributed via email as well, I'm not sure if anybody is on Teams right now, but if they're able to pull that up and share it, I don't know if that is the wish of council, but if you wanted it available to the public, I think it should be that number.
Yeah, Counselor McKim.
I guess I, this is sort of a comment question, just to confirm, and I believe this was said in the email, that the money that is, that we'd be appropriating for the County Financial Director is essentially re-journaling or repaying existing salary that's already been paid out. It's not a bonus for the County Financial Director.
Correct. And I, I'm sorry for not mentioning that. I was going to mention that during the category transfer portion. We got notice from the Commissioner's Office that they were unable to, or they may be unable to obligate all of their remaining projects. And so, we are using the salary from the Financial Director to pay out of ARPA, and then the amount that was originally planned to pay out of ARPA for those contracts that may not be obligated by the end of the year, those will come out of County General. So we're just kind of flipping them around.
Is that, the alternative is, we lose it?
Correct.
And we, or cannot use it, and so we must be crafty here. Okay. Yeah, Counselor Iverson.
Just so I, I'm reading this correctly, the amount that we are being asked for, to then appropriate into septic is $206,190.01?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's a serious pass through here, doing good work. Other comments, questions from council? Counselor Crossley?
Never mind. I was, I was trying to find, because I know in one of the last ARPA conversations, we talked about the generator for Steinsville, and I'm just trying to see on this sheet where that is.
That's got to be towards the very bottom in gray. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Hoosier Hills.
Yeah.
I, I seem to recall the emergency management had said something to the effect that they, they needed some time to figure a couple of things out, including mobility towards generator option and not necessarily tied down to bricks and mortar. So it needed more investigating on that part.
Okay. I remember we talked about it, because as we were talking about rural housing, that was one of the things, and we wanted, I know Counselor Hawke was very much interested in making sure that Steinsville got their portable generator. So, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, lots have happened since then. So, just trying to square things up. Thank you.
All right, councilors. Like Angie's got her hand up. Go ahead, Angie.
You're muted.
Okay, how's that?
Yes.
Okay. My concern with what has happened here, I should have talked to Carly, I didn't, I talked to somebody else. And anyway, my concern is, if we do this transfer, or this, we change the project, there is no money appropriated in County General, that I'm aware of, where I can expend these dollars out of for the end of the year. Because I have seven projects that remain, and I already have three contracts back, and I have half of contracts for the other. And when I spoke with Mr. Cockrell, he had said that as long as I thought, you know, we could get the contracts by the end of the year, then there wasn't a problem. We had even actually talked about, if I have to, I'll just drive out to somebody's home to get the, their signature if necessary. So, my concern here is, I know we don't want to give any money back, but I also don't want to, I have people who have been approved for projects, and, and it wasn't that we can't, it, the problem that had happened, that has happened, is we've operated all along under the presumption that the application and then the email notifications was sufficient to act as a contract. However, I think, believe Baker Tilly has since weighed in, and they wanted an agreement. So, at the last minute, we are, we're getting the contracts out, or these agreements out. So, that's a lot of information I just threw at you, but the final, or my biggest concern is, there has to be an appropriation in County General if we take it out of, if we, if we remove this funding from ARPA, because I've got people that need to get paid, and I'm just concerned about this approach.
Okay, that was a lot of information. I guess, start off with a question, you know, here we're seeing that we are deappropriating for rural housing $33,000 and $46,000. Is, is that about, I mean, do those numbers comport with what you were just talking about, or am I reading this wrong?
No, you're correct. So maybe I've misunderstood something, and I apologize if that's the case. We do need to deappropriate, because that amount will We do need to deappropriate because that amount will definitely not be expended. I, maybe I misunderstood what was being said and then I thought that the remaining projects that I have were going to be converted into.
If I can clarify what I think is, is being done here and this, maybe this really relieves you, Angie, or alarms you worse, I think what's being done is we are saying for these where there's no contract, we're going to say, we're going to re-apportion the ARPA dollars so that we're paying for something we can verify now. And then out of general fund, we would say that the dollars that we are not expending towards, pardon me, we would, the dollars we would not be expending out of general fund towards that position would then go towards these projects that are approved. We wouldn't be cutting any project or putting it on the butcher block. We would be keeping it, just trying to manage the money here so we're compliant. Carly, my sense is right?
So Angie is correct that there is not an appropriation for these expenses in County General.
And that's a big problem.
The goal of moving the salary into ARPA would increase the cash balance by the amount of the appropriation. And by increasing the cash balance, we are hopeful that in 2025, when the portal opens, that counsel would give the Commissioners an additional appropriation to cover these projects.
Oh, we can't do that. We cannot, absolutely, we cannot do that. I've got, these are vendors who are, who have done work that needs to be paid and the portal whole issue is in March and possibly April. And so there is absolutely no way that we can, these people have been told that they can have this work done and the vendor has been told and some of them have actually started the work. And we cannot not, we cannot not pay these people. I mean, this is just.
I believe that we can do some in-house transfers in the beginning of the year to create budget for this. And then once the portal opens, we can appropriate the lines that we are pulling the appropriation from.
I have one, I have one project that I think I'm worried about just because of the inability to communicate very well with the homeowners, been through the trustee. And that's a $9,000 project. If you're going to trans, I mean, if you want to do $9,000 because that one I know isn't going to happen until after the first of the year, that's fine, but please leave these, leave these, these other ones in play and I'll have a contract, I'll have an agreement. That's because, I mean, we're just putting people in.
So basically it, are you just asking for the, the amount that we would transfer from the County Financial Director to be reduced by $9,000?
That reduce to $9,000.
To, to $9,000, okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Wiltz?
Well, we're not to that motion yet, but.
Right, but we're still trying to wrap our head around a lot of this. I'm tired too, anyway. I do have a question. I really do. It's, uh, two things. You said that you have people already working on this, but you don't have the funds obligated. So these are folks working on projects, but you don't have a contract with them or?
No, the situation is all along, we have operated under the premise that the application process that we have, the application that's in play, the quotes that we get from the, the vendors, we have operated up until like two weeks ago, under the premise that that was sufficient to be considered an obligated project. Baker Tilly, a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was, said, no, they would rather that we had, the county had an actual formal agreement, which Commissioners passed last Wednesday. And I've gotten three of them back. I have seven outstanding projects. And I just have the one that I'm, that I am concerned about truly being able to get it obligated. But I, all the other ones, I can get obligated. And I know I can before the end of the year. But people have only had one day to do it, given everything else that was going on. So it's not that this money, we have operated as if this money was obligated and it wasn't until two weeks ago or whatever, that we learned that Baker Tilly wants an actual agreement. That agreement was passed by the Commissioners last Wednesday. And I got it out to these people Monday. What day is it? Tuesday, Wednesday? This is Tuesday. So I got it out yesterday and I've got three back.
Counselor Iverson?
Okay, so you answered part of my question. You've got three back. How many contracts do you need to get signed in total in the next 14 days?
Four. I have seven projects.
So you only need signatures on four contracts?
Correct. And I, I, so when I talked to Jeff about this earlier today, I said, he said, just leave it where it is. And I thought that that was a conversation he had with the auditor, but clearly that's not true. Because, you know, obviously the auditor has come up with another option, but if, if you wanted to take only the 9,000, just leave the other money because I can get those contracts. But the one $9,000 contract, that's, I'm, I'm not sure that I'll be able to get it before the end of the year. I'll get it, but I don't know that I can promise that I would get it before the end of the year.
That seems pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you.
I agree. And I believe that, that Ms. Purdy can probably chase down a contractor too. I think she's got some experience in that field. My, so now I have another question and it's because I think I wasn't paying as close attention when I was pulling up the screen share. But so the 92,000, that's our pending council actions. Where, is that money all going into the pending Commissioner actions? I'm not sure what's happening there.
The 92,000 that you see as the net amount, that is the amount that was never appropriated. So we've always operated with less appropriation than what was the cash balance in the fund. So we are appropriating the entire cash balance tonight and that's why you see that increase in the appropriation.
So Carly, I don't understand the two rural housing. I know the 33,571 is not going to be spent, but the 46,000, that needs to just be 9,000.
We were operating with the most recent information provided to our office. I apologize if there are any changes since that information was provided. I'm happy to make adjustments as needed.
Counselor Iverson?
If we were, my question is to you, if we were to reduce that line to $9,000, what impact would that have on any, the County Financial Director position?
It would simply amend that amount, the same, so the positive and the negative would equal out. I will make it known that if those do not get contractually obligated for any reason, we would have to give the money back to the federal government.
Right.
That's not going to happen.
I mean. Go ahead.
And the other thing is, is that $9,000, if you put it into the Financial Director payment, we need to make sure that there, that there's an ability to pay that 9,000 in January, someplace out of Q or out of.
I don't, Angie, I don't think anyone's saying we're not going to pay for things that the county is in good faith gone out and done. I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is what happens if you encounter someone that says, I'm not so sure about a contract that I'm getting on December 14th and I may want to talk to my attorney about this until January 20th. In that case, you can get into some weird holiday travels, whatever it might be, we could get into some weird, so I think we're trying to figure out how, and I'm not sure I can get us back here on 28th of January to fix it on the 30th.
It's going to be okay. I mean, it really is going to be okay. You know, we just, it will be okay. And I know that we're, I understand about holiday travels and things, but we're talking about people who, who don't have the money really for holiday travels. And, you know, so.
I, I agree with that. What I will say is this, we've been in this process for a while now and we have not said to any other entity, it'll just be okay. And so I just, we, we, and on contracts, I mean, my God, the meetings, I've been in the county discussing whether or not a contract must be there for this, that, or to build an outhouse. And so I just think some of this is a little bit of trepidation because we're changing language at, at the end of the year. And so anyway.
I totally understand that, but my only, but my concern is, is if, if you, if you do do the changing, the trip, doing the category transfer as proposed by the Auditor's Office, then I am unable to pay vendors for the rest of this year or for the beginning of next year until the portal opens in allegedly March and, and/or April. And we can't, we can't do that. So that's, that's why I'm a little, that's why I'm really stressed. And I know that I, I don't like being in a position where I'm having to say, we'll get it done. But I've been put into that position because we were operating one way and then took a left turn at Albuquerque and here we are, trying to redo that, this whole other way. And like I said, I don't, I have, you know, I can't promise you, I mean, that's absolutely true. I cannot promise you. But I, I mean, I'm going to move heaven and earth to get these.
All right.
A solution.
Counselor Wiltz?
So if we were to do the transfer of the full 46,000 and everything as proposed by the Auditor's Office, and then also go ahead and make a trans, a category in-house, whatever transfer, let's do something tonight that appropriates money for the purposes that she needs so that she has that freedom in a different account. If, if moving this money this way is on the up and up, which I'm slowly kind of coming around to, then we should be able to also not have to wait till January to, to put the money in place for her to pay people.
Not bad.
We can go through and look and see if there is any department that has money that is still available for 2024.
Well, rainy day.
Or we've got rainy day.
We've got, we've got an appropriation on rainy day. Right? I mean, we don't want to spend it and hopefully y'all would top it off next year by that amount, but.
Right. And that's what I was going to say. If you, if, if you wait till 2025, when that budget's available, you can create an account line in, let's just say the council budget, you create that account line. We have Sophia Travis money that is budgeted that's not going to be used until later in the year. Get that spent and then you can, you know, additional appropriation it back later in the year for 2025. So it would be available in January.
I don't think, I don't know how you do that because, okay, so rainy day, I get rainy day, but, and, and Kate, I really, I'm, I'm with you on this. If there's a way to do it now, do it. But I think you have to show it as an additional appropriation and that's not been advertised.
No, no, we wouldn't have to show an additional appropriation if we did an in-house transfer or a category transfer for services, because that's what it's going to be is services. And that's where Sophia.
From where? Because I can't do category transfers between my two locations, like in County General. I can't do a, a transfer from my 30s in 0161 to my 30s in 0068.
Kim, you're talking.
So you're talking about a different.
Right?
Talking within the council budget.
Yeah, within the council budget. Kim's got a good suggestion.
In the council budget, we create a line that would be able to pay those contracts or we actually have a contract line. We could do an in-house transfer, move that money and pay those contracts out of the council budget, because I know that money is going to be available day one on January 1.
I like that. Now, but, but I also have people that, do you have money I can spend this, at the, spend now because of, you know, because ARPA, we can continue to expend those throughout the last, these last two weeks of December. I mean, I could tell vendors that.
ARPA line until the end of December?
A decision needs to be made tonight.
Yeah. This is the 11th hour.
Any claims submitted right now would be emergency claims.
Yes, and, and these are considered emergency claims for these vendors. And here's my, here's my question. Can you do the action to have it take effect for whatever is remaining on January 1? Can you take the action this evening of leaving what's currently in ARPA for the rural repair? Leave it there and make the statement that by the end of the year, if, if it's not, if it's not in contract, then you would approve, you would approve however much needed to be transferred into, so the Financial Director would still be the fund, but I don't, my brain's not working, so I don't know how, if we're taking it from the Financial Director, but then also using it from the Council's budget in 2025. Sorry, I don't know how you make that right.
Kim, did you have a suggestion?
I just don't feel like this is an effective way of doing things. I don't, you know, could, could Angie and Carly go off into, you know, into the hallway and talk to each other on the phone and come back with a solution that would work? Or, or Kim and, and Carly and Angie or something? But I think just doing it this way, we're not, we're not really getting anywhere. And we still have a number of things that we need to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to. I'll talk to anybody.
I just propose a solution. I believe Jeff McKinnon mentioned that we have rainy day available. And so if we have any expenses in 2024 for these contracts that arise, we can pay them out of rainy day in '24. And in 2025, the remaining amount that needs to be paid will be paid out of the council agenda or at the council's budget. Is, is everybody agreeable to that?
Looking to my left.
Okay, so number one, I agree with, with Councilmember McKinnon, this is not the way to govern. This is very messy. I appreciate the suggestion and I think that that would allow for any $20, $24 needing to go out the door, they could be, they could be paid to vendors immediately, right?
That is correct. And we also can make corrections or adjustments after if we find other places in the budget in 2024 to pay these out of.
Yeah. And then that gives some breathing room if, you know, all of this is, is assuming that the contracts aren't going to be signed. So I, I like having contingencies because quite frankly, Angie, I don't think it's fair to put you on the hook for over $37,000 in the final two weeks of December. That, that seems very intense.
Appreciate that.
And we have this, we have this situation in, in rainy day. Now, the, you know, I, I don't think. I, I don't think by our own resolution, that's really the way we want to spend rainy day. But, but it is an emergency, sort of. I mean, we, we kind of is an emergency. I just think everybody would have to agree to, to replenish rainy day, which, you know, we're certainly allowed to do, um, as soon as possible in the new year by any amount that it's out.
Among the members that we have, yes, but there are one, two, three, four of that and three, one night here and, and two that will be different by then. So yeah, that's, that is a course. So if we were to proceed on that path, what do we do? Withdraw this motion here tonight and just let this be? Or what happens?
The auditor's suggestion is to proceed with what is on the paper. I can tell you, I just ran a ledger report for general fund. And in general fund alone, the unexpended balance is currently over one point nine million. I would find it hard to believe that in that one point nine million, we don't have budget for forty six thousand dollars.
But I don't have a budget for that. I don't have a line I can spend out of. That is my.
Do it. I, I agree. Rainy day is the way to do it.
Rainy day.
Rainy day.
Rainy day.
Rainy day. All right.
If you're here. I mean, are you okay? Do, do you see any reason Angie not to use rainy day?
No, no, but my, just for clarification, so that we're all on the same page. If we're using rainy day, my understanding is that we're going to do the auditor's request of the forty some thousand. And what that means that like tomorrow, if I need to pay a vendor, that's going to have to be paid from rainy day. Are we all, this, this takes the whole contract issue out of the, the ball of mud that we have playing with.
Yes. Yes. And that, all that money will revert to the general fund and can be used next year to transfer to rainy day to top it off.
And the vendors get paid in time for Hanukkah.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Cause, um.
Motion is, yeah. Okay. What councillors, any, does anyone have anything they've not said in the last two hours on this?
Half hour of our lives.
I'm gonna pontificate on Mr. McKim now.
Thing I like is, uh, all right. Let's go to the public for any comment they have, including if they just want to unmute and swear at us. They can do that. Now's your time. Come to the podium in Natu Hill or raise your hand on teams. Waiting because this would be where we get our grades, friends. All right. All right. No grades yet. Let's do this. Let's go to a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay. So just so that we're clear, this is a roll call motion for an additional appropriation in account line three, six, seven, one of two hundred six thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and a penny. Correct? All right. Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay.
Yeah. So now we will, let's see here. Now we move on to B, correct? Yeah. So we're going down to B.
All right. Traveling. Counsel, I move to approve the following deappropriations and fund eighty nine fifty dash zero, 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 American Rescue Plan Act. Account line twenty nine zero, zero, one gun safes, forty nine dollars and nineteen cents. Account thirty six, seven, fourteen program support, twenty five thousand dollars. Account thirty six, seven, twenty jail locks, eight thousand two hundred. And account forty eight, zero, zero, six paving and drainage neighborhoods, forty six thousand, eight hundred ninety six dollars and eighty eight cents for a total deappropriation of eighty thousand, one hundred forty six dollars and seven cents.
Second. Right. Carly, do you have anything to add here?
I believe we need to add the deappropriation of the rural housing part A and the amount of thirty three thousand, five hundred seventy one dollars and ten cents. This is the amount that per the commissioners, um, is not set to be utilized for this program.
Counsel, I'd ask unanimous consent to adopt that rural housing part A, thirty three thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars and ten cents into the, uh, motion. Any objections? So ordered. All right. That said, any discussion on this underlying deappropriation? Question will be, who can spell deappropriation? Five times. All right. Seeing none. Let's go to comments from the public. If you have any, come forward to this podium in the Natu Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, a question I have, do we need item C based on all this? This was the, C was a.
That was added, right?
That was added, I believe.
Yeah. What was it?
That's that category transfer. That, or are we going to do the rainy day?
We're doing rain. So we, we don't need it, right?
No, we do need it.
We do need it.
Don't do.
Do you have to obligate it?
Yeah. In order to do the rainy day process, we would have to do a category transfer to move the appropriation to the financial director.
Right. So then that money will go in the general.
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up.
Okay. Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for a category transfer and fund eighty nine fifty dash zero, 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 American Rescue Plan Act fund in the amount of forty six thousand, four hundred thirty seven dollars, fifteen cents from the services category to the personnel category.
Second. All right. We've discussed, right?
Can you just amend that to add the account line since it has not been added to this fund?
Line one, zero, zero, three.
Just that one for the financial director?
Yes.
Ask unanimous consent to also add line one, zero, 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 three county financial director.
Any objections? So ordered. All right. So we've done that. These minutes will be as clear as anything ever written. All right. So we've got the underlying motion. This is finishing this off. We're almost there. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none. Let's go to, yes, Councillor Iverson. No, he's not. Let's go to the public. If you have one, uh, raise your hand on teams or come forward to this podium. Seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. So now we're gonna leave the land of ARPA in good hands?
Nope. I need one more thing. Sorry. Um, we need to create an account line within rainy day for them to be able to make, uh.
Payments to those.
Payments. So I have to defer to Carly with regards to that account line. Don't have a page, but I will use your electronic signatures for that one.
If no one opposes, I suggest we use contractual services account line three, eight, three, two, zero.
What's the fund number?
Not, it's a eleven eighty six dash zero, 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 zero.
Counsel, I move, we, uh, create the line in fund one, one, eight, six, dash, zero, 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 rainy day, line three, eight, three, two, zero, contractual services.
Second.
All right. We've got this motion second. This is the last ARPA item. Any questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none. Let's go to the public. If you have a comment, come to the podium, raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Voice vote. Can we do a voice vote?
It's a creation. You can do a voice vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same side. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item seventeen. This is, uh, auditor's office in end of year housekeeping.
Um, counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request and fund forty seventeen dash zero, 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 twenty twenty geo bond capital projects, the creation of new, of new, the creation of the new, uh, account lines as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of ninety nine thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars in the services category and two million, eight hundred eighty two thousand, one hundred thirty four dollars and forty cents in the capital category for an appropriation of two million, nine hundred eighty one thousand, nine hundred twenty four dollars and forty cents.
Second. Okay. Uh, Carly, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, this is the twenty twenty geo bond capital projects fund. It does not require appropriation. However, the council has decided to appropriate it historically. Um, in twenty, sorry, in twenty twenty three, this was attempted to be entered into gateway, unfortunately, because the state funds and our funds do not align. The wrong fund was used, so on and so forth. We are going to get that appropriated in twenty twenty four just for clean records.
Questions, comments from the councillors?
Just to clarify, this is correcting errors, not that we suddenly have a hundred thousand dollars to spend on furniture.
Absolutely correct.
That money has already been spent on furniture.
If I recall correctly, the rest of our agenda is.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping. All right. So with that, anyone else? Let's go to the public. If you have a comment on this housekeeping item, you can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Let's go to item B.
All right. Um, counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and fund forty five, eighteen dash zero, 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 twenty eighteen redevelopment bond in the amount of two hundred fifty five dollars and ninety nine cents in the services category.
Second. All right. And any questions from council on this? No? Right. Any public comment? If you have them, come forward to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none. Let's do a roll call.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and fund forty five, twenty dash zero, 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 twenty twenty redevelopment bond in the amount of one million, three hundred eighty one thousand, six hundred forty five dollars and seventy three cents in the services category.
Second. All right. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none. If you have a comment in the public, raise your hand on teams or come forward to the podium. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move to D.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to reestablish the FLSA status of exempt to job description, general ledger, grants manager, and internal auditor, and to simultaneously amend the twenty twenty five salary ordinance to reflect the change back to exempt status with an effective date of January twenty twenty five.
Second. Questions, comments from council? Seeing none. We'll go to the public. If you have a comment, raise your hand on teams or come forward to the podium. Seeing none. Go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Let's go to E, which is the largest motion councillor Crossley will ever do.
You'll get sick of me talking like my kids do. Um, all right, counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for an additional appropriation and the following funds to ensure account lines under appropriated or, under appropriated or appropriated outside of council approval will have a positive balance for the twenty twenty four budget year end. Item E, fund forty nine, uh, hundred dash zero, 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 employee morale, two thousand, five hundred thirty two dollars, forty two cents in the services category. Fund forty nine, twenty six dash zero, 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 zero courthouse rental, five hundred forty dollars in the capital category. Fund one thousand dash zero, 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 five, general fund sheriff, nine dollars and ninety nine cents in the supplies category. Fund eleven, fourteen dash zero, one, six, six, lit special purpose YSB, four thousand dollars in the services category. Fund eleven, fifty six dash zero, 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 zero firearms training share, four thousand, three hundred thirty three dollars and eighty cents in the services category, twenty two thousand in the capital category for a total appropriation of twenty six thousand, three hundred thirty three dollars and eighty cents. Fund eleven, seventy six dash zero, 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 zero motor vehicle highway, four thousand, seven hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand, one hundred seventy two dollars and sixty cents in the services category. Fund twelve, twenty four dash zero, 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 zero reassessment fund assessor, seventeen thousand dollars in the services category. Fund forty, zero, nine dash zero, 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 zero sheriff cell administration share, six thousand dollars in the supplies category. Fund forty one, zero, zero dash zero, 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 zero donations, youth shelter YSB, one thousand, nine hundred five dollars, sixty seven cents in the supplies category. Um, fund forty one, the zero, two dash zero, 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 zero donations, um, APS unit ten prosecutor, five hundred ninety dollars and thirty seven cents in the services category. Fund forty one, zero, six dash zero, 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 zero donations, safe place YSB, six thousand, four hundred sixty seven dollars and seventy one cents in the services category. Fund forty one, one, zero dash zero, 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 zero donations, prevention, general YSB, one thousand, four hundred ninety three dollars and eighty three cents in the supplies category, three hundred ninety six dollars and sixty five cents in the services category for a total appropriation of one thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and forty eight cents. And last but not least, a fund forty one, eleven dash zero, 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 zero donations, BTCC YSB, two thousand, nineteen dollars and eighty four cents in the supplies category, sixteen thousand, four hundred sixty three dollars and thirty one cents in the services category for a total appropriation of eighteen thousand, four hundred eighty three dollars and fifteen cents.
Second. Well done.
For folks watching at home, I just have a note here that they've left me to read. This is, these are, is a housekeeping motion that's now before us. Per the auditor's request, the auditor's doing a very good job about monitoring the books, making sure that we're keeping compliant with things. And this is council's end on that. Um, any member, though, that wishes to separate a particular fund from this motion may make a motion now. As said, you'll have to do that and no one's gonna help you do it. So you're on, you're on your own.
Let's separate them all.
Be a brave councillor. Is everyone okay with the motion as, as identified? Carly, do you have anything you want to add here?
Thank you for reading all of that. I do apologize.
That's okay. I use my husband's TV voice.
There you go. All right. Councillors, do you have any comments or questions other than what's been said? Okay. So, uh, we'll go now to public comment. If you have any, come to that podium here in the Natu Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Wiltz.
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
Councillor Crossley.
Yes.
Councillor Deckard.
Yes.
Councillor Iverson.
Yes.
Councillor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. And you've got several pages to sign. So just so you know.
And it looks like we've got a hand raised. Am I missed a public comment there? Mr. Mister, Mister Burnworth, I think it is, do you want to unmute and offer your comment?
Okay, here you go. I was just wanting to ask, could you repeat that whole thing? I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Oh, that's funny.
We've got, we've got comedians in the public too, it's not just.
That's great.
That's great.
This is a good county, I tell you, friends.
We need to go laugh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any, uh, so we, have we done the roll call on that then?
Yes.
All right, my brain has left the building. So we're on item seventeen now, Kim, correct?
Um, it should be, uh, there should be a.
It's item R.
Seventeen R?
Yeah, there should be an R.
Okay.
That is, and I will read, here we go. Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request for the creation of account line thirty-two seven seven six principal other debt and fund one thousand dash zero zero six one county general counsel to assist in making the necessary geo bond debt service payment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discuss, Ms. Woodruff, you want to add anything?
You want anything added, or is there unanimous understanding?
This is weird enough that I, I feel, even though it's late, I feel like we need to.
Yeah.
Have a.
Yeah, please.
If you don't know, I can, I can answer, because it was Bree and I that meant to do this. Okay, so Bree and I met this afternoon, and when we were looking over the seventeen eighty-two is when we discovered that she, the, the payment was going to be short. And so at this point, you know, she can't ask for an additional appropriation, so we looked to see where could this payment be made out of, since it's a debt service, it, you know, has to come out of general fund. So, um, our council fund, I had scheduled a contractual with regards to FSG and, um, I'm having a brain fart, I'm so sorry. F S. FSG has yet to send us a, a bill for twenty twenty-four, so I'm assuming what's going to happen is it's going to come in twenty twenty-five. So we have the funds to be able to cover in our budget for that, so we need to add that account line so that we can separate it out and they can, you know, and we know why we're doing it, so. And we'll do an in-house, in-house transfer from contractual into that, into that line.
Counsel McKim. And I'm sorry, what was that amount again? This is like five thousand something?
Um, yes.
Five thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and forty cents.
Thanks, and we think it's round, it's just rounding is the reason why we were short?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, councilors, any other comments on this one? Seeing none, how about the public, if you have a comment, come forward to the podium or raise your hand on teams? Done, let's go to the final roll call tonight.
It's a creation of an account line, I can do a voice vote.
Well, let's do that then. Councilors, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That is unanimous adoption of councilors present. That takes us, friends, to item eighteen, counsel comments. Councilors, any comments for the good of the order? Counsel Iverson.
To all of the staff in rural county, to all of our department heads, to all the folks that are providing services with us, all those who work with us, happy holidays, this is the final council meeting, and just wish you a end of year that is merry, bright, and full of mirth, so thank you for working with us, and we look forward to working with you next year.
Full of mirth. I enjoy being mirthy. This, this, this meeting has gotten mirthful also.
We gave you, Counsel McKim, we gave you a real city council type meeting at nine-twenty PM here.
I really appreciate it. My last meeting was such a doozy, that was, that was great.
Any other counsel comments? Counsel McKim.
Thanks, and I'm, I did want to talk just briefly about the, first of all, the seventeen eighty-two's, and so my understanding is that there, you've essentially addressed the debt issue, that the highway issue was, has been addressed as well, the highway was not really a million dollars short, but that was just how, which fund the miscellaneous revenue was recognized, and there was also a, I think, a transfer in rainy day that wasn't reflected. I mean, I know it doesn't really matter that much, but is that something we were going to correct?
Uh, we have put in a call to DLGF, our, to our rep, and so we're going to, you know, see if that's something we can do, so.
It just makes it look like we're, we're running our rainy day down almost to nothing when none of that is, is correct, so that was, that was my only.
Yeah, we're, we've reached out to them, we're just waiting for a call to come back, so.
And so that on the seventeen eighty-two's, we'll notice that the operating balance at the end of December of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five is over twenty-five million, and that, that is in a fund in which our target balance is fifteen million, right? And I say that just because I, the one, one regret I have in the way things played out is that I don't get to vote in favor of a, a raise for the sheriff's deputies to be competitive with other law enforcement agencies around, and I understand why we didn't do it tonight, and it would, would have been absolutely insane if we did. But I think there was some, I, I, I kind of want to compliment the council office on the analysis that the council office did on the sheriff's proposals. I think there are a couple of things that are, that are important that came out of it. One of them is the idea of tying the, the senior staff to, the appointed senior staff to the sheriff, as a percentage of the sheriff's salary, rather than relating to merit deputy salary, just like every other elected official, their chief deputies are paid as a percentage of the elected official's salary, so that, I, I really hope that the next council moves forward and, and, and adopts that, that practice. Then, then the other, I think the, the other thing is you came up with a series of scenarios, and scenario three, essentially, it wasn't as much as, as they asked for, but it was enough to be ahead of the city, to still be ahead of the city, and that's what I'm hoping that, you know, so that, that maybe around ninety-five hundred, ten thousand dollars would give that, I, would, I think, be enough to keep competitive and make sure that, that we're able to continue to recruit and retain. And so I, that would, I seem to remember that was maybe, that would maybe cost about five hundred thousand dollars. And I guess what my suggestion is, is that, that five hundred thousand dollars is, would still be able to fit within rainy, or not rainy day, within the general fund for one year, and then you can, you can kind of see, for example, at the end of this year, what our, what our reversions are, what the fund situation looks like, other opportun, other alternatives would be some small amount of, of the jail tax. Now, I know we can't directly put the deputy salaries in the jail tax, but I mean, there are plenty of corrections related expenses that could be moved over, and the, and then the economic development tax, which can be spent on any lawful county expense, but I guess I would recommend not doing that until the next year, because I think there'll be a lot of things we'll, we'll learn about, you know, whether there's going to be any kind of major property tax change, property, property tax reduction or so on. But I guess what I'm saying is, I do hope that the next council moves forward and works with the sheriff's department to, to provide the, you know, to provide an appropriate raise for the merit deputies to make sure we, we, we stay competitive. So that's, that's my one substantive comment, I guess my other comment is just, I thank you all for your, your friendship and mentorship and collegiality over the years, I thank everybody in the, the council office and county legal, it's, and the auditor's office, it's just, it's been a pleasure dealing, working with all of you for so many years, and thank you very much for, for this plaque, so.
Thank you. Thank you much, Counselor McKim. One thing I did tease Jeff about earlier, just a moment ago, when I said that this is our last meeting of the year, I said they'll call me tomorrow and there'll be a need to come back, so don't, don't you worry about that. Hopefully I'm wrong on that, but if, if this is indeed your last meeting, thank you so much. Today has been a lot for us, and there's a lot going on come January, there will be different people here in some part of January or not, but we never forget what we have and the experiences we get, and just thanks so much. It's, it's, it's awesome. Today is a bittersweet day in so many ways. Any other counselor have anything they need to add, other than they want to go home? Thanks to our, all of our folks that got us through this year, hopefully this will be the last meeting of the year, but they'll, they'll be the ones telling me that here in about six hours or so, but otherwise, everyone out there be safe, be good to each other during this holiday season, thanks to all of our county folks for doing what they do to keep us safe in that, including the folks at our sheriff's department and in our, our entire system roads, all that, that keep people moving in this season. All right, friends, with that, we will adjourn.
Really want signatures on all these things.